will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, November 24th. Roll call, please.
Trustee Paul.
President.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Kabaki.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Allison Williams and Trustee Zerbal are excused for this evening.
Okay, we're going to stand for the pledge now, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please always remember the men and women throughout the world in uniform. Now, before we have any action on the agenda, I would just like to take a moment of silence. The village lost another one of its former trustees recently. It was trustee Jerry Nichols. And we've lost Ken Seidel, Jerry Nichols, and Keith Cormier recently. And could just take a moment of silence to honor them. Okay, thank you. I need action on the agenda. I have no changes.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Number five, action on open and closed minutes. From the special meeting of October 27th.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve those meetings. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the village board regular meeting minutes of October 27th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Motion to approve the joint village board and finance and personnel meeting November 10th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must date, name, and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. And the board is not able to take action at this meeting. So anybody who would like to talk about items not on the agenda? Any items not on the agenda? Moving on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. I have none. Does anybody have anything?
None received from the office of the clerk treasurer, Madam President.
Okay. Moving on to number eight. We have a special night tonight. We're honoring the EMT of the Year Award. So Chief, if you'd like to come up.
All right, thank you. If I may, Joe, come on up. We're going to recognize Joe for EMT of the Year. But what I'd like to do, if the board will indulge me, is to read his nomination because I think it sums it up probably better than I can. So Joe is a volunteer paid-on-call firefighter EMT for our agency. Joe has received awards in the past for his service and his dedication to the community. Joe has dedicated many hours in volunteering for assignments in the community. He provides the community relation assignments through volunteering yearly for national night out campaigns, special events that department is invited to reach out and show equipment and ambulance uses in EMS. He provides patient care at concerts and other special events that take place at the rest center in the arena. Even when working fire patrol during Packer game day events, Joe brings his medical bag and responds into the crowd to assist with medical care. Joe is dedicated to EMS for over 20 years, remaining active and willing to help when asked. Joe presents himself in the EMS profession as a willing and involved volunteer, showing a prime example to others how they can contribute to their communities. Joe is humble in his service and is an excellent example for what others should strive to be when giving back to their communities. So it goes on to say specifically, we would like to submit his nomination for EMS, EMT Person of the Year for the following incident, which is an example of Joe's competence, control, and compassion even when out on a recreational event outside of the village of Ashwabnan. So the date was February 1st, 2020, when Joe was at a dog trial event in Chiecton, Wisconsin. During this event, Joe witnessed and recognized that a participant in the event had fallen during the trials. Joe checked on the participant and a thorough rapid assessment recognized the participant was pulseless and not breathing. So we all know these events when with a crew, but he was not with a crew and kept his composure while following AHA guidelines and recruiting help. But that was not all. While providing resuscitation efforts and engaging help, he also recognized the remote location and provided direction to enlist a helicopter as they were in a field and attempts to have an ambulance may delay treatment. Joe was also trying to coach others to help him, but that wasn't all. While Joe was giving instructions to others to help, the father of the downed participant showed up and fell over, also pulseless, non-breather. So Joe called for more help and then started to give instructions to others to provide CPR on the secondary party, now not breathing and pulseless. Joe continued coaching and performing CPR for both subjects until help and an AED arrived. Joe kept his, Joe kept directing first responders until patient care was turned over to the helicopter and ambulance responders. So I think that this is more than most people have ever come across in their lifetime. And I think that for Joe to be able to not only handle one, but two people along with the other people that are trying to help is nothing short of heroic. Now, the outcome wasn't as what we wanted to, but you know, the effort, the dedication is simply outstanding. So for this, Joe was awarded as Wisconsin, I'm going to get your plaque for you, Joe, EMT of the Year across the state. So congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
Wow, that was, that was a big list of what you did that day, Joe. Thanks. Thanks. Okay. Number nine, action on consent agenda, action on operator's license, the committee appointments, and the investment reports. Does anybody want to pull any or can okay all of them?
Accept the motion.
Need a motion to approve or?
Yes, please.
A move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Number 10, public hearing for the 2021 Village of Ashwabnan proposed budget. Does anybody want to speak for the budget? Does anybody want to speak for the budget? Does anybody want to speak against the budget? Does anybody want to speak against the budget? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Okay, number 11, action items. 11A, action on resolution R. 11-2-20, a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the village of Ashwabnan for the year 2021 and levying taxes on taxable property in the village of Ashwabnan. Now, I'll turn this over to Greg, but before we, before we do, I just want to say that I'd like to thank all of the department heads for the great work that they did on this budget. It was a tough budget. We do have a 2% tax increase on the budget, on the village side of the budget. There, Greg got all the numbers from all of the different taxing jurisdictions and there's other increases. But the village is approximately 11 cents per thousand. And I'll now turn it over to Greg. But like I said, I'd like to just thank all the department heads. They, they knew it was a tough budget and they were very gracious, so.
Thank you, Mary. So this budget is what we talked about earlier this month, no changes. So it's laid out as, as it was then. And so, yeah, as Mary said, our tax rate is up 2%, 11 cents. And that's, on the average taxpayer, it's about $18 on the tax bill. So if nobody has any questions, I don't know that we want to rehash anything. Let's entertain any questions.
Any questions for Greg? Okay, I'll need, I'll entertain a motion then to approve a resolution R. 11-2-20, adopting the budget.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R. 11-2-20, accepting the village budget for 2021. Any discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say about it, after many hours that the staff put in on this and then coming in front of the board and the finance committee with several hours of discussion and going through the budget, I think we did a good job for the situation that we're in and the future of what we're looking at also. So I think everybody did a good job to get where we are, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11B, appointment of village manager. Okay, so this has been a process that we have been going through and we finally ended up choosing our candidate. And our new village manager is Joel Gregazewski. And he is going to be starting on Monday officially. And I just want to welcome you, Joel. Thank you for all that, I saw your name all the time on the list of meetings that you were attending. And great to have you onboard, excited to get you here Monday. So I need an appointment, a motion to approve the appointment.
I'll make that motion. I think Joel will do a great job here. And he's got a great staff to work with and the board as well. And so we're looking forward to getting you onboard.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Joel Gregazewski as our new village manager. Any discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you, Joel. Welcome aboard. Okay, 11C, Baker Tilly Audit Firm introduction.
So I thought it would be a good idea for the board and for department heads and others to have a chance to meet our new auditors. As you, as you recall, we went through that RFP process piggybacked with Green Bay and, and the utility and transit. And so Baker Tilly was the audit firm that we went with. And so they just wanted to introduce themselves, kind of give the board a little overview of what does an audit firm do? What does it mean for the village? It was something we haven't done in a long, long time. I think it's worthwhile. So Carla Gogan and John Raider are joining us and I'll turn it over to them. And they'll, they'll introduce themselves and talk a little bit about, about Baker Tilly.
Well, good evening and thank you. I am Carla Gogan, a partner with Baker Tilly. I also lead our state and local government practice. So really want to thank you for carving out a few minutes on tonight's agenda to allow us the opportunity to introduce ourselves and certainly ask questions if you have them. And also want to thank you for allowing us to participate remotely. So we definitely appreciate the opportunity. We're thrilled to be able to work with the village as your new audit firm. We're very passionate about providing audit services to local units of government. And we certainly have a shared interest in the financial health and the success of the village. So we do also appreciate the importance of strong and proactive communication. So that is one, one thing we will strive to do, as well as meeting the expectations and the timeline that we have agreed to with management to deliver on the audit and the audit process. And so one of our main reasons for wanting to join you tonight was also to extend the opportunity to reach out to us throughout the year. And that goes to management as, as well as the board. And we certainly appreciate questions as they arise. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Carla. And thank you to the board for having us attend as much as we can in this virtual environment. So I echo what Carla said, if the board has any questions for us, please feel free to reach out to us. We, we value open communication lines. And that's, again, one of the reasons we wanted to have this brief intro with you tonight. So I started with Baker Tilly 19 years ago. I'm a director and I'll be responsible for signing the village's report. And I've been just auditing governments the entire time throughout my career. Before that, I actually audited governments in the state of Minnesota. But I can assure you, they did not convert me to become a Vikings fan. I still bleed green and gold. And I, I plan to continue in that for the rest of my life. So, but yeah, I've been in this business for a long time. Like I said, it's all I do. And I think we bring a really, really strong team to the village's audit this year. So just a few notes on that. We have been able to bring in what we call specialists. So we have Jody Dobson, who's the other partner on the utility side. And she has been obviously auditing governments for many years, having reached a partner level. But she, most of that has been with Wisconsin Municipal Utilities. So she, she will be partnering that side along with Ryan O'Donnell, the senior manager. And same story for Ryan. He has many Wisconsin clients and I share many with him and excited that he's going to be joining up with me in these efforts. And then a senior that they have. And Joan Betts is going to be joining me on the, on the village's side and has put a few here. So overall, I think we really do have a strong team, lot of experience, you know, both in years and specific experience too, like I mentioned, utilities, TIFs and other areas that I think we can work closely with Greg on as questions arise, as well as anybody else in the village. When we talk about an audit, I, I want to talk about what we're bringing to the table because sometimes there's a misunderstanding of what is an audit actually involved. And so an audit is really giving you the external, externally provided assurance on your financial statements. So that comes in the format of our audit opinion, usually two or three pages in the very front of your statements. It's telling your, you and the readers or the users of your financial statements that they're fairly presented according to generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. And so that sounds pretty easy to do, but that's, that's a, that's a massive amount of effort behind it. When Carla and I started in this profession, she's told us stories of different governing bodies and I, I do the same because it kind of stands out. There were 14, that I can recall, 14 accounting rules or standards. We are now up to 97. And I think this last year, they just issued five or six alone. So it hasn't slowed down. If anything, I think it's accelerated. So of course, not all 97 apply to the village, but many of them do. So to make sure that the village maintains that clean opinion that grantary agencies, bondholders, and others want to see, it does take a lot of effort. So we'll be sure to work closely with Greg to keep that going for you. So that's, that's the primary thing. We also, along with that, will be issuing a report that we call reporting insights. But it's commonly referred to as an internal control letter, management letter. And when we get back together with the board this spring or summer, and I'm hoping this in person at that point in time, we'll walk through that together. And that'll explain a lot of the required communications and such that are, that is part of the audit. The other two things that we're doing are regulatory reports. So we'll be working with Greg. We'll be completing the PSC report that's required for the water utility each year as it is regulated in the state of Wisconsin. And Form C or the state report that gets submitted to the department will revenue. So we'll be handling that as well. And of course, we'll be preparing the village's financial statements or comprehensive annual financial report this year too. So those are the kind of different services that we're going to be providing. As far as timing goes, just real briefly, we already have the date scheduled. And so we'll be doing what we call preliminary, preliminary or interim work the first couple days, the week of December 14th. We're going to bring a full team and I'm sure there's going to be two full days as we get our arms around all that's going on at the village. That's especially required during year one. Then we're going to leave Greg alone for a little bit to go through everything that he has to do to get ready for the audit, which is going to occur the week of February 22nd. We'll have our entire team working with Greg to get through all the financial auditing that we need to do that week. We hope to get a draft in early May and issue finals towards the end of May of the CAFR and then meeting again with the board sometime in June. Like I said, hopefully in person at that point in time to walk through the highlights and any questions that you may have as far as what on, what went on during the course of the audit. So that's it in a snapshot. I'm going to turn it back to Carla to just mention a couple more things and we'll see if you have any questions for us.
Sure, thanks, John. And John mentioned the number of accounting standards. And we were at GAZB 11, so the Governmental Accounting Standards Board 11, when I started 28 years ago. So there has been a lot of change. But again, as John mentioned, this is all we do. We're certainly immersed in, in all things government. So one of the things I just want to conclude with is we do issue a communication. If you haven't seen it, you will, which we refer to as a two-way communication. And it does outline the audit process that John just briefly went through in a little more detail. And it also really welcomes, again, your feedback. And I mentioned that earlier. An audit process really is a year-round process. When we end an audit, we're really soon after beginning the next. And as a part of our process, it's a risk-based approach. And as a part of planning the audits, it's important that we're not only gaining an understanding of what's happening in the village as well as what's happening frankly in the state of Wisconsin, you know, in the, in the local economy, but also what are the concerns that the board has? And so that communication is, is really a formal way of inviting your feedback to us. So if there's something that you feel is important for us to know, again, we appreciate and would welcome your outreach. We will do interviews with certain members of the village board and we will rotate that over, you know, over the years that we will work with the village. But again, just want to extend that opportunity to communicate with us anything that you might have concerns about. So that wraps up our prepared remarks for tonight. But we will open it up if you have any questions or comments. Otherwise, like I mentioned, that concludes our remarks. So thank you so much. We really are sincerely appreciative of the opportunity and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Carla and John. Anybody have any, any questions? The only thing I would like to say is they just explained all the different things that they're going to do. And they've got a lot of numbers work that they're going to be doing. And I'd just like to thank Greg for, in the middle of doing the budget, a brand-new computer software system for the financial side and getting a new audit team in. And he, he's been very busy. So thank you, Greg.
I just have a quick question, you being our new audit team. What are the challenges that you will have as you're getting started with us compared to obviously working with communities for quite a long time?
Yep, that's a great question. I can go first, Carla, and you can add on if you want. There's always a lot to learn when you start working with a new municipality. And, and, you know, we really started that a few weeks ago by reading through your minutes, going way back into, I think it was early 2019 and reading them current for anything financially related matter through the board and the CDA and the finance committee and catching up on that. I read through your financial statements in detail. So I could go on, but it's really just trying to get our hands around everything going on at the village. You know, you have active TIFs and all kinds of things that we need to know about. And so that doesn't happen overnight. It's a progression. And that's why we got this ball rolling over a month ago, to be honest with you, kind of set the stage and then making sure we bring in the right resources. There are certain things, you know, we've already, we had a meeting with Greg yesterday morning, certain things we questioned. Not saying they're wrong, we just want to have a better understanding of them financially. And we'll keep going through that process going forward. So I would say, you know, in year one, it's really gathering all that together and at the same time, doing what we have to do to evaluate your internal controls and provide some feedback in that perspective. So it's a big effort every year, but especially on year one. Carla, if you have anything you want to add on to that?
Sure, I, I think one thing that helps us with the transition is that, as we've mentioned, all we do is work with, all I do is work with governments in Wisconsin and John primarily as well. He has some outside of the state of Wisconsin. But all of our team members work on Wisconsin municipalities. And so while there are many things that are specific to the village, agreements that are specific between you and other parties, a lot of the types of transactions, whether it be TIF districts or as John mentioned with the CDA, we're familiar with those types of transactions. And so I think that helps us to kind of shorten the learning curve. But you know, some of it too is just learning, you know, personal preferences and, you know, just understanding and knowing who to go to, you know, for certain things. But again, we try to manage through that process to make it as seamless as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 11D, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Sarah Dahl.
Village Board members, if you will, attached is a communication from Sarah Dahl, who's appealing her denied operator's license application. Also included within the original application are letters of reference from various individuals. Ms. Dahl is here. If you have any questions for her, I'm sure she'll certainly answer those. Did anyone come to speak on your, okay. So if the board would entertain suspending the rules for interested parties to speak at, at the appropriate time, there's someone here to speak on Ms. Dahl's behalf. Please note that committee at Public Works and Protection, it was voted unanimously to uphold the denial.
Does anybody wish to open the floor?
So move. Did you want Ms. Dahl to step forward or?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to open the floor also, but if you would like to step forward, Ms. Dahl, you could.
Hello. I got another letter that I just picked up from my old counselor also. Should I just bring that to you?
Ma'am, would you pull the microphone up a little?
Sorry.
What, what, what letter are you referring to?
It's just a letter from my old counselor stating that he approves of me working still and thinks it's a good thing for me to continue working. I don't know, should I bring the letter up to you guys?
Yeah, I can keep it.
Yeah, Patrick will take that.
Thank you. Thanks. I'll go with the record.
Is that the letter from the public or a program director, director from O'Connor County?
No, this one's from my AODA counselor that I had. He's from A Better Future, I think it's called, I'm pretty sure.
Correct. A Better Future Counseling Services LLC.
Okay. So you're appealing the denial.
Yep.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about that?
I just want to appeal the denial because I really do like working for this place. And I know that by not being able to have my bartender's license that I'm, that'd be kind of a useless worker for them and that I'd lose the job and I really don't want to lose it. And I've completed all my stuff for my crimes that I did do in the past. And I'm really sorry that I did mess up like that, but I'm hoping to keep that in the past, you know, and like continue working for growing for this community and being a good employee.
Okay.
Is this, is this meaning that if you do not get this, that you immediately lose?
Could you come up and state your name and address, please?
I needed a motion to suspend the rules for interested parties.
They already did that. We already did that. Steve and Tracy.
We didn't vote on it.
Okay. I need, we have a motion to open the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Floor is open.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Carlton. Sorry, I have a loud voice. I manage the Jackson Point Seco. And yes, unfortunately, if she doesn't have a bartender's license, we wouldn't be able to employ her because you have to have, you have to have that to work on your own, and she's one of our closing girls. So I, yeah, we, Mary and I both, I mean, Mary is, was the owner, and gave it to Ralph Callaway, which is her nephew. And I'm actually the one that recommended her for the job. I knew her years ago compared to now, and I mean, I think she's grown and matured personally as a person. We used to cling together in 2015. I mean, it's a completely different person than I knew in 2016. And I think if given the opportunity, I mean...
Is she currently working for you?
Yes, she has been. We've had one of the other night girls working with her. I've come in several times, too, because we were trying to appeal it. I mean, she is one of the best workers I have there, and she's dependable on time.
Chief, do you have any additional input?
Well, as I talked about, at Public Works and Protection Committee, we have guidelines that we all talked about, that we agreed upon. One of those guidelines are any felony conviction in 10 years and any felony drug conviction in the past 10 years is an automatic denial. You know, we also talked about, you know, I feel bad that if she doesn't get this, that she would lose their, her job there. But I think that, you know, to be fair and consistent, I continue with my denial on this particular case. We also have to keep in mind that if you grant her a license here, she can go anywhere with that license and do bartender's work anywhere as well. So it's only been four years, I believe, since her conviction, so she's not even close to the 10-year mark per our guidelines.
Being on the Public Works and Protection Committee, we had a long discussion on that, and the chief gave us this five-year, 10-year deal, which that was probably the reason we denied her, because she did not get into even close to the 10-year probation, if you want to call it that. You know, we all believe in a second chance. We're not trying to belittle anybody for a mistake they made. Like the chief said, you can go anyplace with this license that she would get if we approve it. Question I have is if we would approve it, can we put the stipulation in there that it's only good for working at the Jackson Point, Jackson Point property?
That's a Tony question.
Pardon?
I said, that's a Tony question.
I'll see if I can figure out the answer here quickly. I'll do some quick research.
You know, I'm going to go back to what I've said along. When this whole thing got started, we've had several people come in front of us that we approved, and that goes back for the last year or two, I'm thinking. But Public Works puts a lot of time in this, and they know what they're talking about when we put that responsibility on it. Then we, as the council, then all of a sudden, we overrule the work that public service did. Well, there's a reason for letting that go through them first and then bringing it to the village board, and then we overrule their hard work. You know, I just can't see why we do that, and that was the reason for the long discussion we had to figure out what the chief's plan was as far as why we overrule this or why we approve of it. So, you know, I, not that I don't want to give this girl a second chance, but I have a hard time saying yes to it because it's only four years into the 10-year program. But at the village board, how they want to...
And keep in mind, second chances don't mean that you need to get a second chance in this type of industry, doing this type of work with these things that are involved. So, you know, you guys also don't get to see everything that we see when I'm doing the background on them as well. So I think that it's important to keep that in mind as well, because some of that information can't be disclosed in your record.
Sure, some of the same thoughts you have, you know, Gary, everyone deserves a second chance and that type of thing. And if this is one of our solid points in making a decision in this manner, and it's 10 years, then it's probably something we should be holding on to, unless we, as a community, decide that 10 years is, is, is 10 years pretty much the standard with what you have upstairs?
For a felony, yes.
For a felony, okay. That answers that question. And with that, I, you know, I feel for individuals who make a mistake, and there's a lot of mistakes made in this world. But when we have rules and regulations and we depend on our staff to bear it through that, we need to stick to that unless we change things at a later point in time.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that Steve said, and Sarah, I congratulate you for going as far as you have and encourage you to continue on and maybe, like the chief said, getting a position that does not require a bartender's license at this time and working towards that in the future. You know, we have to have standards, and I think the fact that there was a felony only four years ago makes it real difficult for me to approve your license at this time.
You know, like the chief said when he does his investigation, there's a lot said that we don't see. You know, naturally, it is not good. You know, it's a shame we got to look at it that way, but I wish sometimes we could say good things rather than look at the bad things. So, you know, I, I know we approved one a short time ago. The lady was pretty close to the, whatever the five-year, 10-year plan was. She was only months away from completing that time period, but we're looking at six years. It's, you know, when you made that mistake, you should have looked at all the possibility, possibilities, what roadblocks are going to be put in front of you. So I'll wait till Tony comes up with an answer here.
All the guidance here looks like the license is directed towards the person, and the license is issued to the person and not specific or particular to a location. So I'd say that once it's, it's granted to the person, they are free to use it at other locations.
Okay, so it's not to a particular location?
Correct.
All right, I hate to be the bad guy.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
What? Sorry.
Sure.
I was under the understanding that the case was dismissed. I'm just, I didn't know if that, if her probation officer wrote the letter. Did that state anywhere in there, once she completed all that, that the case was dismissed?
Could you repeat that, please?
I was under the understanding, once she completed the program and the probation, that it was going to be dismissed. And when Mary and I looked it up on CCAP, it showed it was dismissed. So am I wrong in that?
That's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up because I went through this in the letter of recommendation here from the O'Connell County, where am I here? I wanted to bring that to the chief's attention. Does that change anything in your decision at all as far as the program she's been through and was, you know, released with a good letter of recommendation?
Well, to address the dismissal of some of the charges, there were several charges that were on here, and some of them were dismissed and some of them were read in. But she is still a convicted felon for those charges, so no, that would not change anything.
That wouldn't change your thought at all? Okay.
Did you have anything else to say, or else I'm going to need a motion to close the floor?
Nope.
All right, I'll move to close the floor then if there's no other questions.
A second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. The floor is closed. Okay. I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
All right, I said I'd hate to be the bad guy on this, but I'm going to be, I'm going to move to deny their request.
And I will second that.
So this, okay, so you're upholding the denial?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to uphold the denial of the operator's license. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried.
Can I re-appeal it?
Can you re-appeal it? Patrick.
Another year, right, counselor?
You'd have to...
Not have to research it, but I think it's at least a year.
Yes.
I might be wrong.
And you would want to consult with your own attorney to determine what your options may be as far as an appeal from here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 11E, action on Class A beer, Class A liquor license for Cody Arma, Inc., DBA Clarion Point, Green Bay.
Before you, Cody Arma, Inc. operates the O'Connell Lodge at 2815 Ramada Way. However, they shall be changing their affiliation in the very near future to Clarion Point. And as part of the affiliation process, as noted in your informational sheet, Clarion properties are required to possess the ability to offer beer and wine to the customers. As such, they would like to install a small marketplace pantry located behind the front desk of the main lobby. And there is a representative here from the O'Connell Lodge. If you have any questions for him, this did pass at Public Works and Protection on an unanimous vote.
We do have several hotels in the area that do have this, this license.
Correct.
So, any questions?
As this was reviewed by the appropriate committees with the recommendation for approval, I would make a motion to approve as noted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class A beer, Class A liquor for Cody Arma, Inc. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 11F, action on requested site plan review regarding proposed accessory structure for Zorn Compressor at 733 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-66-4-2-A. Aaron.
The requested site plan review, as Mary alluded to, is for a property at 733 Mike McCarthy Way, Zorn Compressor. They're requesting an accessory structure not to exceed 10 by 20. It'd be located on the west side of the property, immediately adjacent to their existing structure, to accommodate some overflow tools and supplies that right now they're just kind of busting at the seams in their location. This would be a temporary structure. It'd be permanent, but it's a, not attached to a foundation. It's a, it's a, it's a shed, is what it comes down to. The accessory structure within the sports entertainment district and village center does come before the site plan review committee, planning commission, and village board for approval. Site plan review committee and planning commission have both recommended approval with the condition that the shed not to exceed 10 by 20 and is painted or otherwise matches the color of the existing building. Representative Zorn Compressor is in the audience. You have questions for him? Otherwise, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Being on both committees, being in the sports entertainment district, we're trying to improve it, not make it look worse. And I don't want to not make it look like we got add-on buildings or whatever. There was much discussion on that. Knowing their problem with storage, we could understand that. Aaron, the question I have for that, going by the property, is that shed behind the utility boxes that are quite large on the west wall of that property? In other words, is it going to be hidden behind that?
I guess I'd probably defer to the property owner to answer that question. I guess if you wouldn't mind just stepping up to the table?
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Dean Shaw, 733 Mike McCarthy Way. The new utility, electrical utility box that's been installed within the last couple of months, it is going to be behind that, yes.
Behind that, all right. That'll camouflage it quite a bit. Those are pretty huge boxes. I'm assuming they're four, five feet tall, something of that nature. So that'll, that'll help the situation that we're thinking about. We did recommend painting it the same color as the permanent structure, so I guess it'll blend in and it'll help them out. We're trying to promote good relationships with our customers we have here in the villages or businesses. So if there's no other questions, I'm moving to approve the project as presented.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to say yes to the accessory structure for Zorn Compressor at 733 Mike McCarthy. And Gary, did you want to add with conditions of approval?
Yes, yes, with the conditions.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, everybody understands it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 11G, action regarding development agreement with General Capital for proposed senior housing and townhome development. I would like this item and G and H, if we could possibly table these until the next village board meeting.
I saw move to table these.
Second.
Two items to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the two items, G and H, till the next village board meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they are tabled. Thank you.
Can we tell when the village board will discuss that?
I believe our next village board will be Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you.
11I, action on body camera program. Chief?
Okay, I won't take up too much time here. I just wanted to introduce the body camera program. As most of you know, it was one of my goals in the budget to bring forth this program in 2021. I think it's an important program for Ishwabanan public safety. I view this program as something that will be good for both the officers and the community, transparency that is involved in that. Many of you don't know that I've been involved in two of these programs and implementing them in my previous two agencies. So very familiar with this program, how it works, what is involved. The company is out there that we'll talk about a little bit later on. But from an administrative point of view, not only does it protect our officers, but it protects our citizens as well. It provides for our officers to put forth a better quality product in the form of reports to the DA's office. It allows our DA's office to put forth better prosecutions, and it saves time and money in both of those regards. We also, you know, like to talk about some of the things that the community wants. They want us to be accountable for our actions. Our officers want nothing more than that as well. Having this type of program, though, we get to see the whole incident, as it occurred, how it occurred, not just the 10 or 15-second video that sometimes gets put on TV shows, media, that type of thing. So I think it's important. I view it as a, an insurance policy for the village as well. It can, it can protect us from claims that are unjust, but it also can protect us from these low-frequency, high-risk incidents that become public. And we were able to do that in a quicker manner. And we were able to do that in a quicker manner. Some of the downfalls of the program, some people will talk about the costs, you know, with budgets the way they are, it's expensive. It really is. So we'll talk about that later on, as how, how we want to fund that, that type of thing. It also takes up personnel time because sometimes there is more open records requests. And so with these videos, we have to redact certain things based on open records laws. I believe we have the staff here to accommodate that, so I don't think that's a really big challenge for us, quite honestly, so I think that we'll be okay in that regard. And so those privacy issues, I think, can be handled in a, in a pretty efficient manner. That's basically what I wanted to introduce to you to, at this point, the fact that I would like to get this program going, that it's going to be a financial cost. I will be looking for a commitment from, from you as to whether or not we want to go forward with that. There are things that we need to talk about because it could cost anywhere up to and above 350,000 to 400,000 over a five-year period. So we have to talk about how we're going to fund that and what, what those hurdles are to doing that, so I just wanted to introduce that with you initially as to my intentions and ask for any questions you guys might have right now.
Chief, are there, are you saying there's more information as this continues on?
Yeah, there'll be more information as far as costs, how we're going to do that. I, I have, there's probably at least five different companies out there that I want to explore as to what might be the best fit for our agency. And depending on what those companies are and what we do, it's really going to depend greatly on what the cost for us is going to be. So we'll talk about that later on when we talk about negotiations for price and things like that.
Okay. Well, I've always, when body cameras came around, I've always said that's something I wish our public safety would have, it's good insurance for them for whatever disturbance there is, so if there's any recommendations, I applaud you for doing your, a good job on getting this program going.
Thank you.
I, I also am an advocate for the body cams. Don't know how they're going to get paid for it, but I think we need to start the discussion at some point because I, I think to ensure the health and welfare of all law enforcement officers in the coming times, I've, I've said this to Brian before, I think that this is going to become mandatory. You won't have a choice, you will have to do it. So I don't, like I said, I, I don't know where the, it's going to go, where the, the challenge is going to be the financial aspect, but, you know, like I always say, we'll, we'll work through it, so.
Chief, there seems to be a tremendous upside as it relates to accountability and other positive impacts from implementing such a program. In your implementation and two other programs, in two other municipalities, was there any downside to that in any fashion or format? Were there unforeseen things that have occurred or is that?
The, the only downside's cost, in my opinion, and how you fund that.
Thank you.
You might be getting into this in closed session a little more, but the 350,000 to 400,000 over the five-year period, is that mainly for data storage or is that for capital or is that a combination of the two that you're estimating?
It, it's a combination of the initial purchase and then continuing on with the storage of the data because that's really where these companies have done a good job on their end of building these reoccurring costs and how we store the data. We have to worry about, you know, storage, we have to worry about laws and regulations for how long we keep these videos. And so those are the things that we have to address internally as a policy issue, but that's where the costs come in as well.
Chief, does the, how much does this impact the day-to-day officer? You know, as far as, you know, I've seen it where, oh, he didn't turn it on or he didn't, so those type of questions, are the, have the systems gotten better that they automatically turn on, so an often, because obviously the officer's got a lot of things going on at that moment, you know, are, are the systems getting better to be able to deal with that?
They absolutely are. You know, I can write policy that says that they mandate that they have to turn it on when they're interacting with citizens or they draw their weapon or their lights come on, but as you just stated, there's a lot of things going on and they don't always remember to do that. So automation is becoming the key and a lot of these companies are really capitalizing on that and how to automate it. They've got sensors on your holster, if you draw your weapon, it automatically comes on. If, you know, you turn your lights on in the squad, it automatically comes on. So automation is really becoming the key, but that's not driving the cost down either.
Right. I, I can see where that'd be driving the cost up, but I still feel that that's very important in whatever systems I looked at. I'd hate to see the burden be put on the officer that, oops, I forgot to turn it on because, as you know, we can write all the policies we want, but what happens out in, at that moment, might not have that opportunity to turn the camera on.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's been my experience that those, those high-risk incidents where you really need it the most, seems to be when they don't turn it on because they just don't, they're just not thinking of it.
Yep, right, which is understandable. So I think any system that be looked at, you know, that has to be a key element of it, in my opinion.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you need a motion to proceed?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to come out of closed session with that because we can certainly talk about that and, and that might be a better option.
Yeah, this is informational.
Yeah.
Informational, so.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Just a minute, it says action. It says action here, so we're going to have to take an action on it. Right?
That's why, what I read into it, that's why.
That's what I saw.
So I, I would make that motion.
Yep, okay, so we have a motion to proceed?
I second it.
Motion and a second to proceed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11J, action on ordinance 09-05-20, amending Ashwabandhan Municipal Code, Section 9-1-33, misuse of 911. Tony.
This ordinance before you tonight is simply a cleanup that corrects the citation to the state statute regarding the misuse of 911. So just amends our local ordinance that refers to the proper state statute.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 09-05-20. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11K, action on proposed weights and measure fee schedule 2021.
I can take this. So if you're not aware, we contract our weights and measure services with the city of Appleton and we have an annual review every year where they go through our scheduling, what they're going to do, what their plan is, and they have a, a fee schedule that they hold too. They contract with a number of different communities, but they've also got averages for city license fees that they've captured in, in the county and across the state. They're making a recommendation to adjust some of the items as listed on the, on the sheet before you. We have not done a weights and measures fee adjustment in a number of years, so some of them are just kind of getting us closer to the city average. In many cases, we're not, we're not close to that, nor maybe we should be because there are bigger cities in there, Green Bay, Appleton-type numbers. But it's just an adjustment to help, you know, pay for increased costs and things like that as part of that program. So they're recommending there's a variety of, of line items that they would just like to adjust. Some of them are just a dollar, most of them are just a dollar change, and there's a couple of $5 changes. Like the base licensing fee, we're currently at 40, they're recommending go to 45. The average for 2019 was 8167, so we're still barely over half of that average.
Okay.
I was just wondering how many years you've worked with Appleton on this?
I've been here 14 years since, longer than that. It's, I, I don't know that we've had anyone else I'm not aware of.
No, we haven't.
No.
It just seems strange that Appleton's coming up here to do that.
Yeah, they, they have a lot of different communities. It's an interesting process that, that they go through, so they come in and they're the ones that check the weights and measures throughout the village, so they do a great, great service to us.
Yeah, it seems like in their, their recommended fees, their changes are very minimal for what they're asking and they have changed.
Their cost structure is very low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing I'll note, and I'm not going to say anything more, is that there are re-inspection fees now for the second and third time for incentive to, to comply.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't follow.
Number 27 and 28, the re-inspection fees, I noticed that those are new and they must be you being used to encourage compliance.
Correct.
Compliance is not being.
We don't have a lot of seconds. Most in the village are fairly compliant, so, yeah, that would just encourage people to get it done, yeah.
Very good. I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the weights and measure fee schedule for 2021. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11L, action on resolution number R 11-1-20, election worker appreciation. Patrick.
Well, it's been one hell of a year. Let's just put it that way. Four elections, COVID-19, losing election inspectors left and right, but we have citizens stepping up and, and offering to assist. So I thought perhaps the village board would like to show election worker appreciation by resolution to the, as, as noted here, what I wrote, the unsung heroes of the elections and that being Public Works folks, putting everything into position the day before, breaking down thereafter, obviously the election inspectors themselves. For November, we had 60 election inspectors and this year we started Central Count, which is all new to the village, and that worked out quite well. And quite frankly, the deputy clerks, they're the backbone, they're the cornerstone of the operation. So I thought, in a way, maybe we can just do a, a resolution to thank that, all those folks for their help and dedication to the citizens of Ashwabandhan.
Yeah, they, they really worked, they worked very hard.
Yep, they went above and beyond the sort of geopath, though. You need recognition as well. You're the lead in all of this and it wouldn't have functioned as well as it did with you, you know, not giving the direction and so you need some recognition as well.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
It's very well deserved with Patrick and, and your people and the Public Works employees, just seeing everything that you do to make sure the elections run smoothly, fairly, and equally, and this resolution is well deserved.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll go on the record saying, thank God there was no recount.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution R 11-1-20, election worker appreciation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11M, distribution of state-required housing fee and housing affordability report. Aaron.
These are two reports that our department's required to provide to the village board every year following Wisconsin 2017 Act 243. It goes through the housing fees and housing affordability, I guess, items for the village. It's there for your information and if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk with you anytime in my office or any other time. No, no motion or action is required.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that it's a, it's a great report. I went through it. I think it's something that us as the village board needs to really consider because as you start looking at this, you start recognizing more and more that we are getting, we always say we're landlocked, but it's actually getting worse and worse and worse. So we need to start to think out of the box and start saying, all right, what else needs, can we be doing? The stadium district is one thing where we're starting to pile things on top of each other. Well, that's one direction, but maybe some rezoning needs to be done in certain areas, maybe different things like that. I know I had a conversation with Mary earlier today and Aaron, I think I'd like to talk with you that at the planning committee level, I think we should discuss this after the first year and start to say, all right, let's start laying out some what-ifs. Where can we go? What can we do? Because very quickly, in order to continue to grow Ashwabandhan, and we all know we've been pretty flat, we, we need to start to do something. We got to find a way to break out, break away, in my opinion. I think this report is a good baseline to start from and try to figure out where to go.
And I, I think along with those lines, one thing that we will have to do in the next couple of years, probably in 2022, is we will have to start the process of updating our comprehensive plan with the new census information. And it's also been a good opportunity at that point, that's our, basically our five-year update to that plan, to take a look at it from the different aspects, whether it's housing, parks and recreation, so on and so forth, to see where we want to go or continue to move forward as a village. So I think it'd provide a nice entryway or segue into the comprehensive plan as well.
Agreed.
Good job. Thanks, Aaron. Okay, number 12, items for next agenda. Well, we have the two General Capital items for the next agenda and now I need a motion to go into closed session.
Move to approve to go to closed session.
I will second it.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger, here. Trustee Kabaki, aye. Trustee Fluki.
Aye.
President Kardasky.
Yes.
And trustees Williams and Zerbal remain excused. Closed session items during the meeting of the village board of the village of Ashwabandhan may convene in a closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851E, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on the purchase of body cameras for the Ashwabandhan public safety and deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19851C, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on village clerk position and considering the employment, compensation, or performance evaluation data over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And finally, C, Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.851F, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on the village clerk position and the financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or an investigation of charges against specific persons except where parents be applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. The village board may thereafter reconvene in an open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.852, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. We have taken the vote, thus we are in closed session.
Thank you.
This-